...amend resolution forty-three, two thousand and eleven. It was associated with the Nautilus Trail reconstruction project.
Check.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Melina?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlin?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yep.
Going to report, Mayor?
I guess I want to touch on something that was brought to my attention actually down, when I was down in DC back in May. And it's kind of getting ugly here in Summit County area, and Chief Park could probably help me attest to this, too. More and more, we're starting to get these opiate payments that are becoming pretty popular with the young people. And it's just, I don't know, have we got anybody on that task force, too?
They're combined in Summit County, they all were.
They're all together, okay. But just to give you an idea, when people talk about stuff that these guys do, and when they go on the opiate task force and things like that, that just from April and June of two thousand and fourteen, there was nine million doses of opiate medications were dispensed to Summit County residents, nine million, from April to June. Legally. 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 That's like seventeen doses for every man, woman in Summit County. And they've garnered back about six hundred pounds of unused prescription medicines in that period of time. And at the AVM Crisis Center provides one thousand three hundred fifty-five detox admissions are about four every day, so just four people a day that they admit for opiate addictions. And then at the Orient House, every once in a while, I don't know if it's up this time or not, but you'll see, one of the things that we have to do tax levies on is the Orient House. They reported two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one drop-ins, so eight people a day come in and say, hey, I'm addicted to opiates. So, it's saying, we know that one in five high school students report using prescription drugs without a doctor's prescription one more time in their life. Eight out of ten teens will misuse prescription drugs, get their drugs from friends or relatives. And so far this year, Akron EMS has one point four opiate overdoses calls per day in Akron alone, just in Akron. We've had an increase up to three point three nine per one thousand hospital births in Akron on the NAS, which is the neonatal absence syndrome, which is kids that are hooked when they're born are already hooked on opiates. And then, it's, the data shows that the NAS is more common than Akron anywhere in Ohio. So anyways, the average cost of baby born with NAS is fifty-six thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars, and average length of stay is an extra seventeen days in the hospital, with a peak of fifty-three. And the Summit County Coroner's Office reported as many sixty-four deaths by overdose in two thousand and thirteen that can be attributed to opiates. But, what the opiates end up doing, because of the cost of them being so expensive on the street, which is, I don't know, ten to twenty bucks or something, it depends on what it is. It's OxyContin, it's more than that, it's like sixty dollars or a hundred dollars a bill, whatever the bank, so they're switching to heroin, because heroin's so much cheaper and so much easier to get, so. When you hear us talking about doing things with our police force and working on drug task force, there's a reason why we're trying to keep that out of Reminder Bill. But our children do go to Aurora, our children do go to Twinsburg, so if you have any, just keep your ears out, you know, listen to things that are going on, and let the public know if you hear of something going on in the village, because I think those numbers are staggering for just a little Summit County. And when you look at it, Ohio, it goes, I think California was number one for opiate, and then Ohio was like number, was it four in the nation? You remember up there? I don't remember exactly, but it was up there. Was number four in the nation, so that's when you see these doctors that they end up putting in jail because they just give out shirts left and right, and they walk in and say, hey, my elbow hurts, no, okay, here, here's Vicodin, or here's whatever, so that gives you an idea of what, so it's just something I just thought I would enlighten people, and keep it nice and cheerful.
And so, you may want to know, too, that one of the things that people have to do is light their medicines up if they have kids or their children.
Yeah, yeah, make sure you got them on a walk place. And if you have them updated meds, would you, you know where we take those, Paul?
We'll dispose of them.
Can you guys dispose of them, Carl? Why not? All right, policeman, can you do that?
We can dispose of them.
I thought you guys had days that you did that, no? You don't want to talk about it.
We don't get involved in any drugs. We're done for.
All right. All right, that's all I got, I just wanted to give a little education today.
Mr. Carpenter?
Thanks, Mario, just one thing, with regard to ordinance twenty-one, that's the ordinance to amend the zoning map, to change the zoning of that small parcel, two point eight parcel land, there's going to be a public hearing on that October sixth, or November sixth, seven? Seven o'clock, November sixth at seven o'clock here, so this will go through its regular three meetings, you must have the public hearing before it's passed, so that will be coming up.
With age as a signal.
That's a Thursday thing. Oh, ten a.m.?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I got it.
Okay, ten a.m., I'm sorry.
And it's November sixth, which is the third thing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Esser?
Yes, sir, before you know it, you have change order number two, that's a mild motion change order, Tri-More, and we have, we've gone through and done most of the punch lists, we had to dispose of some water valve, we've done the punch lists, and they're completing all of that, there's one tree that was damaged, we're taking down, no charge.
Are they replacing that tree? Okay.
No, not at this time, I don't want to put anything in there, I'm still trying to find out what we're going to do, see if we can do something with the ditch or whatever. Also, there's amendment to the resolution, substantial increase in cost. We have gone back to Cleveland Water to ask for additional engineering inspection and construction costs, because we extended the water line to eliminate future problems. Water line's now all the way up to the, tightened to the pipe that goes under the channel. So in the future, move on the opposite side of the channel down to Clintwood, when we replace that part of main. So we eliminated all that, so we requested additional funds for that.
Now, they were able to put the additional, that isolation shut-off valve in there, too, right?
Yes, yes, that was another thing, isolation shut-off. Basically, we're asking for inspection costs of five percent, and no more than that for the final contract, and the majority of that, in fact, your cost from beginning to end actually went down. Your original cost was like thirty thousand dollars for inspection in Cleveland Water, we're paying the remainder, Cleveland Water's now paying fifty-seven thousand, and yours would only be twenty-nine, so it really hasn't been, no increase in cost to you than originally, but this helps cover me for all the extra hours we had to do because of the added work. We submitted regarding the trail wind jammer to Cleveland Water, I think, you and the mayor were going to go down and try to push and get that awarded, so we know that they can award those, that project, so that is, are been submitted to Cleveland Water for their approval. Harrington four and five, all the drains have been tightened, except for one property. Just to explain what happened was, the property owner built a debt, Terry asked to hold off for two days, we tied his main into the other, the property owner, who had, did not allow us to build it, to tie his drain into it, his drain is now underneath this concrete patio. So that's only one drain that dumps into the channel, everything else has been tied in and corrected, so.
Is that still that same lot?
Right behind you there, I want an idea, he put that patio in without, and we requested the police just hold off for one week so we could finalize all the drains, clean it all up, he refused. Harrington seven, the grading plan was approved, we just received the plans for the utilities and everything we're reviewing, they requested do some storm upfront, I just didn't find my heart to allow them to do anything until I get through the plans, just because they've always been so cooperative with us, so.
Now, which phase are the movement during?
Seven, eight, there's a portion, there's a cul-de-sac that was on the original plan, only area they moved here on, that was part of the original plan, it was approved by planning commission, they're doing nothing else. The rest of the road, realigned from what they're requesting, asked for the planning commission, so they dropped back and are only going to have a small cul-de-sac for twenty-one miles.
If, have, we have not approved?
The grading plan we approved.
Oh, the grading plan.
Promotion control and grading plans, we could add, we've not approved any of the utility plan, and we're not quite allowed to do any of that work until we do. That's really about all that going on right now.
And it came in, I think, like today, everybody should have Terry's report in their box for engineering if you want to review, but I know it is in the.
I got one question, do we know when they're going to start the bridge?
They wanted to wait until after the vote season, which is end of October, right?
Right.
Right, and I, I kind of told them, while that, I haven't got confirmation that they, I know I've talked to ODOT, also, they're working with them to finalize the plans, I was, I was going to give a call here.
How long do you think, how long do you think it's going to take them to?
It will not take long, like I said, this isn't.
A month?
Even less, and they're not shutting any of the road down. Basically, they, they saw it cut into the bottom of the beam, and they put a fiber strip in there, and they grouted in, and it's been utilized in California, a few other states, kind of new to ODOT, but ODOT has used it in a couple places, and they're working with the contractor.
Okay.
So there's not going to be any work on the top side of the bridge?
The approach slabs on both sides, because they've got to get down, so that, I'm mistaken there, I forgot, yes, the approach slab on both sides, and they're cracked anyway, so they told them they had to replace them anyway, so they do have to take out, so they want half the road, take out the approach slab, but insert these in, and put the approach slab back, but the rest of the work on the bottom, so over top of the bridge, you don't have to, you know, just put the approach on both sides.
Will they replace those one slab or will they?
I'll make, I'll make sure they do half the road.
Well, that's what I was.
Yes, half the road at times. We'll manage it.
Anything else, Chief? Brett Center?
If we had hours, comments, I guess, if they want to say anything about it.
I think every use of weapon absorbed in. This thing only have options. Thank you, follow your heart. Deborah?
I have three items, the first one is the, I received notification today that this auditor of state accepted the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen audit, they called a desk review, and they just sent us notification that it has been accepted as is, and I will post the audit to box dot com for council to review, if anybody wants a hard copy, please let me know, and we'll also post it on, Stacy, do we have the capability to put it on the website? Okay, and we'll post that on the website as well. And I wanted to thank the mayor for his work with Summit County in getting the eighty-one thousand dollar inheritance tax that was incorrectly sent to the wrong municipality originally, and the mayor went down and talked to them, so we actually did get that money into our bank account today.
What she said?
What's that?
She said it'd be in the bank vault.
She did, it was here. And then also, council has a copy of the most recent fund status report, and you may have noticed that there are four funds that have negative fund balances, and that is due to the audit and the fund balance adjustments. The mayor and I are going to meet over the next week and go over how to properly move that money to take care of those negative fund balances, those were all based on corrections that had to be made. For example, the first one, the Public Service Vehicle Acquisition Fund, two nine oh nine, that was simply the payment that was made for the new EMS vehicle, and there was no legislation for the transfer of funds, so I had to transfer the money back to the general fund where it came from, so the money is still there, it just was moved around, so the next council meeting will have legislation to request more transfers to get rid of those negative fund balances. Until I have, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Chief Park?
The only thing I have is to comment a little bit on what the mayor was talking about, the reason that Summit County has more meth labs, more arrests, more people than any other county in Ohio, is not because we have more violators, but because we actively seek and pursue the meth labs and the bad guys. Right now, there's sixty-two people that work full-time in Summit County on meth labs, drug trafficking, and some organized crime cases, as well as we coordinate with three different federal jurisdictions to run Title Threes. We have one full-time guy there that's working, and I'm briefed about weekly on what they're doing, so I know that this year that we're probably approaching close to a hundred meth labs that they've already cleaned up. Our people are cross-trained to be able to clean up the lab, so we don't have to call in teams now from Cleveland, so they suit up, they clean up the labs, dispose of it, process the evidence, and properly get ready for prosecution. That's all I have.
I have a question, I know where that camera's placed, have you gotten any results? What are you finding, can you say?
I mean, we got results, it monitors every day, every hour of every day, average speed in the three locations that we've placed is between twenty-one miles an hour and twenty-eight miles an hour. It had twelve hundred hits in seven days in, when it was on Morley, so there's twelve hundred vehicles in a week that went down there, and there was two of them that were in excess of forty mile an hour, and I have a sneaking suspicion that those are my vehicles going to call. So when we're running hot to a call, or when we're going to a call, I would, I would think that those are probably our cars. So out of twelve hundred vehicles, we had a total of about seven, I believe, that were in excess of what we would write tickets for. And that's twenty-four hours a day.
Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Chief Parker?
Just to follow up on our meetings that I've had with civil service, we have two individuals in the pipeline right now, in the process to become probationary firefighters, so in the next weeks or months to come, we'll see how they do in that process, hopefully have some legislation presented through it before the end of the year.
I have one more thing, I don't, I haven't talked to Chief Parker about it, but I have a suspicion that he's going to agree with me. If in the event that anybody wants to bring legislation, or take legislation to the voters to repeal civil service qualifications for our part-time employees, I would dearly love that, because it is costing the village a boatload of money, and we're watching, I think we've watched a hundred and forty-two out of a hundred and forty-seven people out since civil service started two years ago, at about five hundred to a thousand dollars a person. So maybe we should go back to the way we were doing it before.
Shockingly, I agree with you.
There's a kumbaya.
We are recording that, right? Deb, you got that recorded?
I think so.
Thank you, Chief.
Both turn and smile at the camera.
That's it, Tom?
Yes, sir. We do have the senior spaghetti dinner coming up on Monday, October twentieth.
What's the deadline to contact Stacy?
Today. We're always, old doors are always theirs.
How many you got?
Uh, what is?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Lot more.
No low, or about more?
Thanks, Jeff. Architectural Board Review.
ABR's next meeting, Monday, October twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock.
Thanks, Mario. Planning and zoning, put it in the book.
No report.
Board of zoning appeals?
We did have a meeting.
We ordered to appeal that. Finances.
We met today at five thirty, we recommended payments in the amount of ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents, our next meeting will be in two juice at six thirty.
Thanks. Cadigal?
Okay, we met on the first Thursday of the month, we're under budget.
You're the head method down there.
They got some instructions to make, and I had to watch local football, and look at it.
Communication.
We met last Monday, and we have the web designer here, who gave us a presentation of the new website, the majority of it's done, it's really just the content that now needs to be worked on, looks really good, in my opinion, so that's, it's ongoing, it should be, should be complete soon, next, probably a couple months.
Thanks, Tom. Long-term community development, I have a report, Hartson, right?
We're all set to go for our Halloween hour party on October twenty-fifth, from one to three, anybody wants to come down and volunteer to help pass out pizza, or soft drinks, or anything at all, you're welcome, I was just wondering, who came up with, it's going to be spooktacular, is that yours?
Soon as I hear them, I'm passing out that question, I guess.
Our next meeting will be Wednesday, October twenty-second, at seven o'clock, where we'll be discussing a possible second tree lighting and a Santa delivery, we have penciled in November twenty-ninth for that possible tree lighting, and Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, you and Mr. Stefani had like an update on the health of the trees in the roundabout?
Yes, he thinks it can be done again.
I mean, I wouldn't want to damage them permanently by hanging someone.
No, he said our service department can take care of it.
Okay, great, well then, it looks like we will be good to go from November twenty-ninth, and we'll be discussing it at the Wednesday, twenty-second meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Records.
New report.
Seniors.
Seniors, as was just mentioned by our fire department, will have their spaghetti dinner Monday, October twentieth, and you've got about an hour or two to sign up, is that? Okay, and lunch was today at the Bahama Breeze, my memory is short, did you say eight people? Eight people attended? Our next breakfast will be October twenty-ninth, on Wednesday, at Tony's in Norfield.
We do have a meeting on the twentieth.
Oh, yeah, meeting following directly after spaghetti dinner.
And I need money for the theater, people plan on going to the first theater presentation in December that night.
Do you, what's, where are they, are they seeing?
I left that paper in the car, I can't remit.
Are they going to have to close on?
It's a mystery.
Too glad you took them the one year they didn't have to close on.
I stopped walking, I know.
The show didn't go without them, so I didn't have to worry about it.
That's it.
Thanks. We have clothes on in this.
Jed's next meeting is the first Tuesday of December, seven o'clock, and I think it's here?
Last one was, it should be here, I don't remember.
Last one was over.
Was it, does it?
Was it? Okay, I think it's here, I'll let you.
Thanks, meeting.
Yeah?
All right, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one thing, the coffee legislation?
I'm going to bring that up under my desk, thank you. I already made a note for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, table legislation will remain table. Ordinance twenty-one, twenty-fourteen, and ordinance to amend the zoning map of the village of Reminder, Reminder Bill by rezoning a two point eight five, six-five acre tract of land from Class A residential to environmental conservation plan developed in district, first reading. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-fourteen, and ordinance to approve and adopt revised heritage all policies and procedures, first reading. Resolution sixty-four, twenty-fourteen, a resolution to repeal resolution seventy-five eight, twenty-thirteen, which provided health insurance coverage for elected village officials, third reading. Resolution sixty-five, twenty-fourteen, a resolution to approve the recommendations of the Twinsburg Township Village of Reminder Bill Jed Board in regard to the twenty fifteen Jed Budget, third reading. Resolution sixty-six, twenty-fourteen, a resolution to approve the recommendations of the Twinsburg Township Village of Reminder Bill Jed Board to modify the twenty fourteen Jed Budget, third reading. Resolution sixty-eight, twenty-fourteen, a resolution to accept the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the amended drainage plan for Phase Four of the Harrington Place subdivision, third reading. Resolution seventy-three, twenty-fourteen, a resolution to approve change order number two for Tri-More Corporation in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and two dollars and fifty-three cents for work associated with the Nautilus Trail Reconstruction Project, first reading. Resolution seventy-four, twenty-fourteen, a resolution, amend resolution twenty-three, twenty-eleven, for work associated with the Nautilus Trail Reconstruction Project. Old business.
Did you see what I took on that?
Yeah, we are out of funds for the purchase of the coffee here at the village, so I guess we will need someone.
I'll even drink.
Well, then, including some of the tables.
Isn't that any beverage?
It's any beverage, right?
Tea, water, that you guys buy?
Coffee, tea, water, yes.
Hot chocolate, whatever?
Yes.
And how, how much has been spent so far this year?
Well, the police department was really, really mad at me, so I let them spend another seventy-five dollars, so we are just under the two thousand dollar mark.
We've spent thirteen hundred and fifty bucks, is that what you told me?
The police department, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember that that's the right number, but I think somebody had the number somewhere, but.
What do you think, Deborah, what do we need to get through the end of the year?
I would say four, five hundred dollars, if you, maybe make it twenty-five hundred?
Can't, can't we just?
Twenty-five hundred, it was two thousand.
Okay, can't we just amend that resolution that we came up with, the two grand, make it twenty-five hundred, would that take care of it? Or do we have?
You can, yeah, you know, the first time we had it, no one knew how much you were going to spend on it, so I think it's pretty clear that each year you might have to tweak it just a little bit.
Right, but instead of tweaking it every year, I mean, that's.
No, no, with the first year, I think we just arbitrarily picked two thousand dollars, they kind of guessed, we didn't know how much it was, but, yeah, we can amend that to make it twenty-five hundred.
That would be good, Deb.
I think that, yeah, twenty-five is sufficient.
When do you see your next purchase coming in, tomorrow?
As soon as I tell them it's okay.
We do need an emergency tonight to go, to go ahead and increase it so you can make that purchase. Any other old business? New business?
Can you, can you give me a little bit of an idea of what the budgeting process will be now for next year? I know that the finance committee is done with their recommendations, have we started scheduling, or have we scheduled any meetings, and when will they start?
Deborah?
I asked to have October to update everything, after finance looked at it, we can meet anytime in November, the first meeting in November, the second meeting, compared to the last two years that I've been involved, we're pretty far ahead of schedule, but we're going to go the first meeting in November, if that's what council would like.
I will not, I will probably not be at the second meeting in October, I have some health issues I have to deal with.
This is November. Right, you're going to be available at the first meeting in November?
Yes.
Hi, thanks, Deborah. Chief? Chief?
Just one last thing for new business. I would recommend we go out for an RFQ for architectural services. Pontia has withdrawn the new footprint. Its subs were also, we asked, requested we speak to its subs. Pontia and all the subs have declined doing any additional work under that center. So they don't want to get re-engaged in the process. I know that, you can go back to your lawyer, I'm sure he'll let you propose this part. We go through RFQ process, request qualifications. We evaluate them, we can interview the three, or you can choose from the RFQ and then finalize the plans and move forward. That's how I recommend, so that you meet all requirements of the state. Forget about the design bill, forget this, forget that. Do an RFQ, you'll have the footprint, hopefully you can choose and you'll basically interview or choose from the RFQ and negotiate the price. Mayor, you know, I don't know, you know, to keep it as clean as possible. Now, if you want to have further conversation with Pontia, but right now, Amber took, this is the revised footprint with you and your subs, he said no. He was given permission to speak to the subs, he called the subs and said, you know, really, some of this stuff is minor changes. They said, no, they're. I know that they're busy, they probably just don't want to jump back into it. But that way we would have chosen an architect and be able to move forward and meet that aggressive schedule.
All right, Chief, thanks. Any other new business?
What's your second road call on the transit?
Mr. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. Carla?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Carrick?
Yes.